The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
You're still locked.
Okay, welcome everybody to town council meeting. Call this meeting order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the world that we serve, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as far as all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Yes. Councilor Angel Condesen. Councilor De Noy.
President.
Mayor Pedinsky.
Here.
Councilor Buddy.
Here.
Councilor Pat O'Uro.
Here.
Councilor Penny Nessa.
Here.
Councilor Russell.
Here.
Mayor Howard.
Thank you.
If our next on the agenda is our audience of citizens, if we have anyone in the audience that wishes to speak, now would be the time. Anyone wish to speak this evening? Same hearing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting and we move on to our meeting agenda, starting with our, excuse me, consent agenda. We've all reviewed the consent agenda, which has various topics, mostly donations in our consent agenda, and yes, I think that's about everything, other than we're approving some services for the police department, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, if we're good with that, take a motion on our consent agenda.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the six items on the consent agenda tonight.
Second on that?
Second.
You. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moved. Okay, on to new business.
I'm gonna make a motion to add another agenda item, and we're gonna make it 1A, this agenda item for the bridge. Stick it in the beginning.
Second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so we're at one.
Okay. First agenda item is to approve an Eagle Scout project. This is for a young man, Brandon Pete. He's going to do his Eagle Scout project, there's a, what used to be, I guess, a pond at one of these light cords at the high school. It doesn't serve any function anymore, so this young man is proposing to fill in the hole with some topsoil and make an outdoor classroom for flower beds, and also, well, that would be handicapped accessible, and he is here tonight.
That's great. That's all right, if you want to, you can, you don't have to, if you don't want to.
Do you want me to explain a little bit?
Sure, sure, why not? If you want to, you can.
Show the microphone, please. Come up to the mic.
Yeah, come up to the mic. Boy, it looks like it needs it from the photos.
Yeah.
What the?
Looks like the old greenhouses.
Yeah.
So, you can see, there's a bit of an upper level to the courtyard, which, there's a staircase going up to, which serves no purpose currently, it's just a pot of grass. And I'm digging two crop beds out there, and I can get donated soil from New England Harvest in Farmington, delivered, and all the dirt would be delivered right outside, there's a door, probably five feet away from the, like, five feet across the hallway, I would have to walk to the science courtyard, so it wouldn't be a problem of hauling dirt around the school. So, digging those two flower beds, and filling the hole fifty feet by, fifty feet long, I wanna say seven feet wide by four feet deep. And then I'm digging one more, much smaller crop bed, on the lower level of the science courtyard, so that handicap students can access it without any difficulty. And then I will be planning to buy picking tables, fundraise by picking tables, and put those over the hole that I filled for, after our classroom.
Oh, nice.
Sounds great, thanks for considering people who have just been raised, it's really great.
Thank you, Brad.
This looks like the old area where there was a greenhouse there.
There is a greenhouse.
Is this still there? Okay, excellent.
Sounds like a great project. Thanks for taking that on, yeah. So, we'll take a motion on this?
Move to approve Brandon Pete's Eagle Scout project at Berlin High School.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Okay, Brandon, thank you, good luck.
Thank you very much. Okay, agenda item 1A is a Public Works project, we just received a notification a couple days ago that we were approved for State of Connecticut grant for 50 percent of a rehabilitation project for the bridge on Edgewood Road. The approximate value of the bridge is about $1.7 million. So tonight, we're asking you to authorize the town manager to sign a commitment to funds for that project. And we have Mike Hearn here tonight to talk about the project.
Good evening.
Don't worry.
I'm doing good, although it's a bit wet out.
Ah, just a little bit.
Yeah, just a little bit. Yeah, this bridge is located on Edgewood Road, about midway between Orchard and Park Drive, so it's going, it goes over the John Hall Brook, and it was built originally in 1920, was rebuilt in 1960, widened a bit, but it needs to be replaced. So, right now, with the application that was in, the state approved on September 26th, the application that's, we're funding, in the local, the local state bridge program, 50 percent, town 50 percent state. So, it's essentially, what we're asking for you to do is adopt the resolution to approve it, authorize the town manager to sign the state forms.
Great. Any questions? And if not, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I will move to authorize the town manager to sign the commitment to fund document and any associated agreements between the State of Connecticut and the town of Berlin. Edgewood Road Bridge over John Hall Brook, bridge number 007002, State Project 9007-0002.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And, well, just, the rest of the money is for the town to fund, but do we have that? Is that something we could?
We literally just got this approval, so what we'll have to do is put this into our capital budget, and this is not something we're gonna do this year or next year, so this will be part of the capital plan, and we'll put it into appropriate sequence. At this time, we, quite frankly, I think we have about eight bridges in line for rehabilitation over the next several years, and so this would be probably, you know, the last one that's in that eight bridge lineup. We'd gotten a report from the State of Connecticut, and we had to evaluate this bridge, Public Works had to evaluate this bridge, probably last, last year, at some point, knew that it was gonna need some work. We got the bridge report from the State of Connecticut, which is available to everybody online, and it got, it got a rating, and, you know, indicated that it needed rehabilitation. When we saw that, we made an application for the grant, and we were able, we just got the notification that we're eligible, so we figured we'll get it onto the agenda and start going through the process.
That's great. Because we're, we're doing some bridges, this, we are, right?
Yeah, right now, we're doing a high road bridge, a high street bridge, that's in construction. We've just finished a Farmington Bridge. The Burnham Street Bridge is under contract, we would've done it this year, but the state funds gotta help back, so we're gonna start that one in 2019. Spruce Road, excuse me, Spruce Road Bridge is being bid, our anticipation, we would build, do that one next year. Kensington Road Bridge, we have approved grant from La Crosse, we're just waiting for the final DOT input, we would put that one, I think that would be probably 2020, and then the last one is the one we just talked, well, the Edgewood Road Bridge, as you just heard. We also had the rehabilitation grant that we were approved, approved for, which we're going through the design process right now, and that's for Berlin Street, Heritage Drive, Waldemere Road, and Worthington Road, so those are the bridges we have currently lined up.
How many total bridges do we have in town? I think we said, what am I, 54, I think?
I have to look.
I think it's 50 to 54 bridges, yeah.
Yeah, including the smaller, under 20 ones?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably have 20-something of large bridges.
Yeah. There's a report that we get annually, or the state does evaluation on certain bridges, and when you, when you take a total of 50-something bridges, some of those are just very large culverts, but some of those culverts can cost their money, I mean, I've done some projects where we had 10 or 12-foot culverts, which you can sleeve them, and you don't have to, which is actually what we're proposing to do down at Kensington. If we can come to an agreement with the DEEP, we'd like to just sleeve the bridges, the bridge down by the post office, and those, that's, that's several large pipes with a box culvert, and I think the pipes themselves, we'll probably put it in the 50s, they're corrugated steel pipes, and at the water interface, the air-water interface, it rusts at that point, and so what happens, you start getting, the pipe starts, loses its, you know, its strength, and it starts to move a little bit, so if you, what you can do is you sleeve it and create a, and create a, keep the pipe good for another 50 years, and the change in friction, the change in the design, it means the water, you can still handle the same amount of water. Thank you. So that's good, we got a lot of bridges in line, and we're working through them. So that's, here, here's someone we can get some funds to fix, so. Okay, so, the motion went second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Two. This is for approval to increase the purchase orders for Train Company, they service our mechanical equipment in several of our buildings, they're requesting an increase in the Board of Education, funding for their services, it's on state contract, it's on a state DAS contract, and Doug Salt is here to explain.
Sure, Doug, why not? You're here, what the heck, you might as well come up for a minute.
I made him come, so.
Yeah, all right, so, yeah, I mean, otherwise you'd feel like, why did you show up, right?
All right, good evening. Yeah, we've had a strong working relationship with Train over the years for multiple projects and multiple buildings. This offer some on-call services, boiler maintenance inspection, repair, those chillers, AC units, trying to keep up with everything, have records of it, helps keep the warranties active, rides a good service record, you know, any maintenance inspection, keep everything warm and cool.
Yeah, that's all right. Good.
They're, they're one of multiple vendors we do use, but we're open to certainly not that requested amount, but we do have a few service contracts that are under 10, so we just, in case, in case there's some unforeseen, we're covered with the, for both accounts.
Great. Okay, thank you.
I'm good.
All right, so, take a motion.
Okay, move to increase purchase orders for both the town and Board of Education for an amount not to exceed $25,000 for Train U.S. Inc. of Rocky Hill, Connecticut, utilizing the State of Connecticut DAS contract number 10PSX-0152 for maintenance, service, repairs, certain mechanical equipment systems.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Doug.
Agenda item number three, it's a request to approve a contract, miscellaneous concrete sidewalks. We went to bid for repairing and constructing new sidewalks, we received four bids, the William Layden Construction Company of North Haven was the low bidder, Public Works is recommending that the bid be awarded to Layden Construction, and Mike Hearn is here to discuss the process.
Thanks. Yeah, four bidders submitted bids, they were opened September 10th, these unit prices that are in the, on the bid awards are good until December 2019, which allows any department, including Public Works and Board of Ed, to go out and get sidewalk projects done with these unit prices, rather than having to bid every small project, which is, I think, a great approach. And I think this has worked well for the last couple of years, from what I understand, I wasn't here, but I think it's a very efficient way to go, and I think William Layden had very good competitive unit prices, we're recommending that they be awarded this contract. I think your package included the bid, the tabulation.
Okay. Take a motion.
Okay, move to award contract number 2019-02 miscellaneous concrete sidewalks to William Layden Construction of North Haven, Connecticut, to allow for concrete sidewalk construction throughout the town by various town departments, including the Board of Ed, through established unit prices. Funding will come from the established line item accounts within the fiscal year 2018, 2019, and 2019, 2020, department budgets. Contract will involve work to be formed through December 31st, 2019.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Stay right there.
Agenda item number four, actually, here's another bridge. We've gone up to bid for the Burnham Street Bridge earlier in the year, unfortunately, the, the state at the time had held up all their, all their monies for, for bridge projects, so we've held off. Once we found out that the money had been released, we went back and we contacted Mizzy Construction, who was a little bidder, to see if they would hold their bid price, they agreed that they would, and therefore, we were requesting that you approve Mizzy Construction to perform the work on the Burnham Street Bridge to be started next April, and, if I may, hold on, so.
I'll just take it over from here. This bridge was constructed originally in 1958, and several years ago, the DOT inspection report showed the bridge as being in poor condition and in need of replacement. So, essentially, 11 bidders bid on the project after the specs and bid package was put out there, Mizzy Construction is the lowest bidder, and it was actually, the bid spread, if you look at it, is actually very competitive, which is good to see, because that means the scope is pretty clear to all the bidders. So, we're recommending that this, and they held their, their costs, which was actually helpful to have, rather than have to rebid it. So, we're recommending that the town manager enter into the agreement with Mizzy Construction in Plainville, Connecticut, to replace this bridge, and this is, I believe, in the 50 percent, so I didn't, Jack, is this in the 50-50?
Yeah.
Program, the local, the state local bridge program?
Yes, it is.
Okay, as we talked about, which is good, another bridge we're looking on for place that we need to, so that's great, we're moving forward, so, motion.
Okay, move to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract agreement 2018-12 with Mizzy Construction of Plainville, Connecticut, to replace the Burnham Street Bridge, number 04473, for an amount of $1,163,930, to authorize the town manager to increase the contract value through change orders, an amount not to exceed $1,300,000.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Oh, yes.
Yeah, you're gonna wipe that to accommodate the pedestrian traffic, though?
Yeah, there'll be a sidewalk on that, yes, there will be.
Definitely, no worries.
Well, if we stop the sidewalks just prior to that, as part of the sidewalk project, the reason being is, is there's no room for it. But as we build, as we reconstruct the bridges, typically, we always include a sidewalk now as part of the project.
Great. More sidewalks are good. For safety and a lot of reasons, right? All right, so any further comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Okay. Springfield? Thank you. I'm sorry, excuse me, ma'am. We have a flooding issue.
Oh, no, where, oh, no.
Spring Street.
Oh, really?
And it's a place that we know, we're gonna do some work on, residents there, and they're upset, so.
Oh, I mean, there's some serious rain coming down here.
Okay.
Five.
Five. Agenda number five, I've been contacted by Miss, Christina Bellvin Farrell, and who's, what she's requesting is the town support the CVS at the merger. And she, what she puts in her emails, that has indicated, excuse me, that the CBS has indicated, that the, was going to leave the State of Connecticut prior to the merger, which was, prior to the merger discussion, and now, what CBS is saying is that they would, as part of the agreement, they would have an estate in the state. So what they're requesting is all, many town managers and town councils send letters of support for the merger to the state, and I felt that that was something too, before the council, not, excuse me, a decision by a town manager, so we put it on the agenda for your discussion.
I mean, I've, I've never seen this before, so I'm a little confused by it, that we would endorse a business merger, I mean, I don't know, why, what would the council?
It has absolutely no legal consequence.
Okay.
It's no different than you elect to vote to say that you support the sale of Target this weekend.
So, why would we do it? Yeah, right?
Kinda senseless, right?
What do you guys think, right?
I, I'm not gonna vote for it.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't think, the allowance here, number one.
That's right.
If they wanna leave, let them go.
Yeah, I just.
They're not going anywhere, we got more old people in the state.
Would it be? That does not move.
Sorry.
Or they've said that, I've read that a lot, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, you know, I thought, is this legit? You know, that, that was my thought, so.
I've never seen this before.
Now, you guys have, well, you've been on the council a long time, Brendan, Charlie, right? I've never, I haven't seen it since I've been here.
I don't know how our voters' support would in any way sway the, the state, like, Berlin said that.
Yeah, right.
Wow, we're all top council, so we should merge and say.
We're here, so we're gonna do it.
I move no action on this item.
I'm right there with you.
Yeah, second. Yeah. Okay, I think we're all unanimous, no, no action on this, because we don't see the point.
Are we that influential?
Yeah, we might, well, maybe, maybe.
We've got power.
I would say, we just, we just might be that important. Okay. All right, great. Number six. Oh, six, okay, so six is?
Well, the number six is with Amy Daniele's resignation from the town council, there are openings on the town council subcommittees, so we need to move, we need to have appointments to fill those slots.
Okay, so, I was looking through this, I talked to Charlie a little bit, so, if we were just, let's, you know, whatever you guys think, I was gonna just kinda put Charlie in, he agreed to replace her on the ordinance committee, the audit committee, which I don't really think that even has a map, right? I don't really.
We'll meet later.
Later, okay, so that might, they might meet later, the rules committee, I'm not sure, when is that ever met, Kay, do we know?
Well, it depends upon, I'm fighting for something.
Okay. No, so we're all right, fine, that's fine, so Charlie can take her spot, and then I was gonna put Alex on technology, if Alex is okay with that, and then Charlie, playing committee with Brendan and Peter, just kinda plug them in where Amy was, if that's okay with everybody, unless everybody has a burning desire for some of those, they speak up. If not, welcome Charlie to the other committees. All right, so, what do we need, we need a motion on that?
Motion to accept the appointments as you listed to the subcommittees for Charlie.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moved. Okay, so appointments, we only have one, and I would like to wait on this one, because I don't know that gentleman, and lately, there seems to be a lot of, I don't know what to call it on the VNA, but there's some turmoil, I guess, I'm not really sure why, but we've had a bunch of resignations, so, before I put someone on, I don't even know who this person is.
Well, I can give you some background.
Okay.
So, he is a resident and has been a resident here in Berlin for 22 years. He is a former Blue Clerk at Hartford Healthcare at Home, he no longer works in visiting nurses, and he's working, I believe, possibly, possibly, Pratt and Whitney, so he does have knowledge of home care, and I think he'd be an excellent representative on board, he's young, and I'd like to see young people being willing to come forward and cover board when there's a void. I mean, I think there's four openings, so it would be great to get one person on board and continue to look for other people who will provide good guidance, which I think is important.
Is he related to town?
I don't know if he's related to town.
Oh, to, yeah.
I've never asked him that.
No, that's great, I appreciate that input, Karen, if we could just wait, I just wanted to, I spoke briefly to these ladies, and I just, there's a lot of turmoil there, I'm not understanding what's going on there, so before we put someone else on there, I'd just like to figure out what exactly is going on there, I'm not quite sure why everyone's resigning, we're talking, I think, six people, perhaps two more to come, I don't know.
Five, it's five.
Yeah, there's a state that they may go as well, but, so, I'm just not quite sure what, what the reason is.
So I think it's better to have somebody on.
Well, until we figure out what's going on there, I'd like to just see why people are resigning in droves, because I've never seen that in my 20 years on a planning and zoning commission, I've never seen eight or six day people, you know, five have left, two more are talking about, and it's strange, I don't know why. So before we make any moves, I'd just like to explore it a little bit more.
Short-sighted.
Short-sighted for two weeks, it doesn't matter that much.
Yeah.
I don't think they've had a meeting in two weeks, right?
Yeah, I don't know, I'd see where to make a change.
Well, we might have a meeting next, too.
All right, well, I, I think, I'd like to wait and just explore why there's such a rush to leave, I don't, I'm not understanding why there's such a rush to leave of all the officers, too, I mean, people with years of nursing experience, years of VNA experience, why is there a mass exodus? I, I don't, I don't know, and I would think we'd like to know, as the council, why that's happened.
I would like to know, before we nominate somebody else, at this point also, things are disturbing, I mean.
Yeah, it's unusual, I mean, it's just, I haven't, I've never seen that, you know, maybe you guys have, but I haven't seen that many people leave a commission at once, so I'm just trying to figure out.
Do any of the councils have any information on this one?
I don't know, I mean, Jack's been talking to them a little bit, but I think it's worth that, I'd like to, I met with a couple ladies, but I just wanted to meet with Wendy, too, and see what is going on.
Oh, yeah.
Sure, but, yeah, if you can shed some light.
Oh, yeah, briefly, there's, there's been a discussion about one member is an employee of Hartford Healthcare, the opinion of members of the VNA board was that it posed a conflict of interest, and they wanted to come before the town council and discuss, they did, they talked to various people within the town staff, we've expressed, we've explained to them that it's not a town, it is not a conflict of interest, we had gotten an opinion from the town's attorney, they asked to come before the town council and speak in executive session, and we explained to them, we can't speak in executive session about that, they also are, they said that one of the members was disruptive in the meeting, and I talked to staff about that, and that staff, the staff member had a different opinion of the meeting. And after, after they contacted me and asked if they could have, talk to the council executive session, I told them not, they had actually submitted a letter to me, they withdrew the letter, and, and then I received, I received almost immediately four resignations, and receivable in sense.
Sounds toxic. Is there any, I mean, is there any way we could talk to them? They didn't wanna talk in front of the town council in an open?
No, they, I explained to them, they could come and talk, you know, we could put them on the agenda where they could talk in public session, and they didn't, they didn't want to.
I talked to a couple of them, but I wanted to talk to the staff, too, I mean, I had kind of what was said was recited, but I'd like to talk to.
Pardon?
Wendy.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll talk to Wendy and just see what her opinion is, too, and I know, you know, you've given yours, I know you've talked to Jeff, so, but I just, you know, from what I'm hearing, more are looking to leave as well, when they're up for reappointment, so that would be, from what I'm understanding, eight would be going, which is just very strange, so, you know, just, if we can just take a breather for a couple of weeks, I'm not sure that would change any decisions that are made, or impact anything. I'd like to do that, just see if we can get, you know, I mean, there's two sides to every story, I, you know, heard some about one side, and Jack, I know you've relayed some of the stuff, too, but just, don't feel comfortable right now putting anybody on there until we just get the whole story, maybe, if we can, the next meeting, just, if there's other details, if there's anything else to report, I don't believe they want to come before us, so, we'll have to maybe go about it in a different way, just get some of the other facts, so, I'll go wait a couple of weeks, that's what I'm, just table that. I'm, I'm, nothing against Mr. Veronese at all, there's nothing, there's nothing to do with him at all, I'm just gonna, just kinda understand what's happening there, because that's a mass exodus, for what reason, I don't, I don't, it's not clear. To me. To me. And council, really, I, we didn't really know much about it, I know Jack told me a little bit about it, but it's, after we've spoken to a couple of them, there's more that are leaving. Talked to Jeff a little bit, too. So if we could just wait for that, we'll, we'll put it on the next agenda. All right, so where are we at now?
How many did you say?
How many did you report, right?
Okay, just a couple things to bring you up to speed on. The senior slash community center application package is complete, it's just, they'll be ready to submit this week. I believe that the notes, all the minutes of the, of the open forum are on the town website. Plus, we did receive comments from two people, I believe, and those are also available. So we've, we've received only two comments, and what's on the town website is the minutes from that meeting. The High Road, just to bring up today, and the High Road Bridge, assuming it doesn't be flooded today, is in construction. The contractor called, they're, they're a little behind, but they are still sure that they will be complete prior to the end of the construction season. I have a report here from the library, Helen Malinkoff. She says that they, that they've gotten very good feedback on the, on the application for the social worker, to the point where that, in fact, I'm just gonna read this to you. The article in the Bronx Citizen caught the attention of Mary Beth Rowland, interim regional director of care coordinate, of care coordination and social work services for the Hospital of Central Connecticut. She called to discuss the details. And while the Community Foundation of Greater Britain was pleased that the idea would benefit all four towns in the service area, they would also like the libraries to partner in some sort of mental health facility. She's putting the, the library in touch with Jessica Collins, Director of Behavioral Health. She in turn presented to the VP, and she was also impressed with the idea. The next step is to connect with the community liaison and present the information to the executive leadership team. Once this is accomplished, she'll, she'll receive official okay, and they can move forward with the grant. They're also helping this with, so the funding would not come through the town, the town would not be the one paying the, the, the social workers. One of the concerns was, you know, that the town would be the one engaging. We, we're not, we're not gonna have to do that now, they're, they're gonna take care of the contracting of the social worker. So it's going very well. It does the regional effort. I think Doug, Doug was here, Doug left. They are, they have met about the jail cells, and there's an update on the schedule for the jail cells. They're reviewing the plans and specs for the project. Those should be, should be completed by the week of 10/15. They're looking at the budget, they expect that the bid to project between October 30th and November 13th. They'll review the bids by the 16th of November, and hopefully will submit a council agenda item, as long as it's within budget, by the 19th of November.
Right.
So they're moving forward on that.
That's great.
The other part of the, the police station, STV, has started doing their study of the space downstairs. I think that they said they're expecting a draft report to the PVC by the end of October. And then the Belcherbrook Interceptor project has actually hit a, say, a bit of a snag, sort of a pun. The liner got snagged and the pipe is torn. So the contractor's working on trying to repair that, they've tried a couple of different repairs. And if you can think of sending somebody down a 20-inch pipe on a little skateboard, they've tried to repair it by doing that, and I said, there's one job I'm not doing. First of all, I wouldn't fit, and second of all, I'm not doing it. So they're, they're trying different ways right now to repair the, the liner. Other than that, the project's going well, but it has hit a snag. We'll keep up to date on that.
You good?
I'm good.
Yeah, great. One, one thing we can just mention, was it, did he email them out to everybody? So we're trying to have a joint meeting with, right? So October 11th was a date that the Board of Finance had agreed to. Mr. Lamagnio, I saw him the other day, he said yes. I don't know if everyone can make October 11th, that's next Thursday, I believe, right?
Yeah.
And.
That's for the, that's for the strategic meeting on, on the funding going.
Yeah, just some informal discussions, well, one thing, and this came from Mr. Lamagnio, and I, I haven't spoken to Matt Tenza yet, but the Board of Ed, at least from Mr. Lamagnio, said they weren't interested in meeting. But, so I wasn't clear on that, that just was an aside to our discussion, but brief discussion, so. I don't know, Jack, if you could check with the Board of Ed and see if they're not interested at this time. I don't know, because of the election coming up, or I, I, you know, I just, it wasn't clear, so I figure we can ask Mr. Lamagnio, I mean, we'd like them to be included, obviously.
I'll check with Brian. Kevin was asking the, the council, if the majority, if, if all or most of the people could make next, next Thursday to the strategic meeting.
All right, so can we? What are we thinking?
What time is it?
It is the library, I think seven o'clock, which is.
Your way? It's worth the library?
Library.
Seven. Your way, do, how about, I wonder if Joe and I could make it by then? What are we thinking?
I think, I think section, I should be going back to work.
This week? Okay, so hopefully. Okay, Peter, what do you want?
Just go ahead.
Okay, I mean, it's just gonna be some, we're not making any decisions, obviously. How about you guys?
Yeah.
Good, good, good.
Okay. So, majority of us can be there, so, and again, just it's some informal discussion, and I guess you, I, I mean, I think even if the Board of Ed's not available, or for whatever reason, I think we should do it anyway with the Board of Finance. I think it's good, we could start talking early about some things.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll, we'll plan on that, and we'll go back to it. I did, one, one other thing, I forgot, I'm sorry, I forgot. And you spurted, you said water. There is a meeting between ourselves and the Kensington and Worthington Fire Districts this Thursday night at 6:00 to start discussions about, just getting a overview of the, of the three districts.
Oh, you mean with the, with Walton?
Yep.
Oh.
Fire Districts, yeah.
What, Thursday night?
Thursday night, 6:00 we're having that. That, that's a meeting between the water control committee, you know, myself and Ray, and, and Michael, and, and the two, the two fire districts.
Oh, good, so can we then, after that, so that's, so after that meeting, maybe pick a, maybe not next week, because we got the other meeting, but maybe the week after, do a, maybe we're gonna do a little bit of a special meeting, just to see what maybe comes out of that one for the benefit of the council, and, and wasn't Ray gonna brief us some more on some other things, we just ran out of time?
Yeah, Ray was, we, Ray, we talked at the last council meeting, Ray, we're gonna wait till after the, the meeting with the districts, and then Ray would come to the next council meeting and give you an update.
Okay. All right. That'll work, that's cool.
Does that meeting open to the public?
I, I think all meetings are open to the public, I'll, I'll, I'm assuming it is, but I'll just make sure.
He's talking about the meeting, he's talking about the meeting on Thursday at 6:00.
Yeah.
Okay. If you have more than, if there's several council members there.
We have to, we have to post it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, is anyone coming other than?
I don't think I'll go.
I think you're going this way.
Okay. Wait for our brief.
When is it?
At least I have one.
It'll be, it'll be Thursday, 6:00.
What about, is there another public forum that'll be in October?
Yeah, we gotta pick a date, probably later in October for that. But before that, I wanted the ordinance committee, we gotta do one, because we got that tax.
Yes, we do.
Abatement.
I was gonna send you dates for next week and see, no, Thursday night. I'll send you out the dates, the potential dates for having a, an ordinance committee meeting.
Okay, we gotta get that done. Because we gotta get that. But we got that, and what else? Do we, do we want to change something with the Blight?
Blight, well, no, the Blight, there's not, there's not a meeting on the Blight, the Blight, we, we've.
Move forward?
We've already moved forward, we have a, we have a injunction, we have a, I guess, a, a meeting at the New Brit Court on the 22nd of October.
Statist Council?
Statist Council.
Yeah, what else are we doing besides the tax?
We sent them, we sent a, a letter with a, with a fine, a penalty.
Oh, no, what else are we doing besides the tax abatement program at the ordinance committee? I thought you said there were some other things we had to do.
There's one on, there's a couple of different ones that we have to, one is on the purchasing requirements for the town.
Oh.
Tax abatement. And also the build, there was one on the building department, we had to make an application to that.
Yeah, and, and there may be a new one, because I know that they were talking about the tax abatement for, I think I'm mixing up terms, tax abatement is really what we use for the new businesses, right?
Right, that's, that's not an ordinance.
That's not an ordinance, right, that's different, yeah.
I actually, I was looking at that today.
Right, is that, so how?
It's a policy. And, and Jennifer was, Capola was working on it, and when she sent it to me, I actually spent a lot of time looking for it, found out that it's in the policy, not in the ordinances.
So what, so how do we, how do we change that, if we do?
I think the council, I think it has to come before the council, make policy changes.
Yeah, okay.
And she was asking the process, I think, what I was gonna, what I thought was the process, and I was working through that, was that there should be a recommendation to the council from economic development to asking for that change.
Yeah, so folks, I happen to go to economic development meeting last night, or, yeah, last night. So they were talking about, you know, new businesses, and we've had a, we've abated the taxes on, you know, many of the new businesses that have come to town in the last few years, but there's talk of, you know, maybe adding a couple of years, you know, looking at our policy, and there was some requests from one particular business that wanted to extend an abatement that we already gave him, so, and that's, you know, economic development is kind of debating that. But we, we looked at the policy, and the statute lets us go, I think, to, up to 10 years, if I'm not mistaken. I don't think we've ever gone past seven, from what I understand, and typically it seems to be more like three or four, right? For most of the new businesses that we've given abavements to, so. There was just some discussion to spur some other economic development, if we at least have the option in the policy to go further. Not saying we will, you know, don't, don't really know what we would do, but, but just to have that option of extending the years, and obviously it has to do with the amount of the project, too, I think. So, you know, one may, maybe instance, there may be a, a large project that developer may do, so it would be, you know, multi-million dollars, so to entice that developer to come, you know, if we have a little bit better abatement policy, a lot of towns do, a lot of towns go up to seven or 10 years, so, not saying we go that far, we don't, just it would depend upon maybe the project and the amount of investment by that, by a developer, let's say, so that's right, well, then we just wanna look at that, so Jennifer's gonna look at that and see if it's, it sounds like it's worth fixing, it doesn't mean we're gonna, but at least gives us more latitude, right?
Well, I think that, because the state changed the statute, I think the recommendation was gonna be to make sure that our policy is consistent with state statutes.
Right, and, and right now, I don't think it is, right?
Well, no, because I, I believe that the state statute only was changed recently.
Right.
And our, and our policy was written in October of, of 13.
Okay, did the statute change, like 16 or 17, or just?
I'm not sure exactly, but it's been recently.
16, maybe, I thought, last night?
So I got an email on it, and so what I was looking through is the process, I believe what, what should occur is that Economic Development Commission should make a recommendation to the town council. And when I was looking through, I felt that it just, that we should change the policy, make sure it's just consistent with state statute.
Yeah, I think they were, from what I, I think they were all in favor of changing the statute, or changing our, well, we didn't know what it was last night, but the policy.
It's an ordinance, the policy.
Yeah, that's, it wasn't clear, so, okay, that's clear. Okay, so that's something we gotta do. Which would be good for the town, if we could, you know, entice people to make large investments here in businesses, obviously that's what we want, so. We have another policy to help us, that's great. All right, so then there is the, there is the community center meeting, I don't know when we want to do that. We gotta, we gotta figure out the ordinance, so next week we got the one on Thursday. And then we got an ordinance committee, when, maybe the week after.
Maybe the week after, we have a town council meeting the week after.
Yeah.
At the 16th, I would, I think we.
Maybe later in October, we can find a date, and if we, you know.
25th, you know, the October 25th, I think is a Thursday night.
Okay, maybe let's look at that date and see if that works for people. And I guess in that meeting, we'll maybe have a little bit more discussion, right? I think the last meeting, we just let people speak, you know, the last time, nobody from the town, nobody really said anything, which was good. And I, I hope if there's, if that's a good date, we'll check on that, we can get, you know, the, the last meeting notice didn't go out too, too quickly. So, you know, we didn't have a large turnout, we had a good turnout, but not a large turnout. So it'd be great to have more people, the more the merrier to show up, and then we could also answer some of the, maybe some of the questions and comments, and throw out some thoughts to people.
If the council's good with that date, then we can go ahead and see if we can make arrangements for the, for the, the high school auditorium again, and then we can, we can get more public, we can get more information out to the newspapers and on our, on our Facebook and.
Just wanted that date, or the first week in November, I don't know. Because the council meeting is, what, the 17th?
16th.
16th. Okay, do an ordinance ma, meeting, right? And that week. We have the, well, that's not a two-day conference thing, it's coming up, but that's later in October.
Yeah, later in October.
I don't know, is it the first week in November, or?
It's the, actually, the very last week of, of October.
Oh, they do the election that?
The first week in November is the election.
Oh.
November 6th.
November 6th.
The.
Week before that?
CCM is, is the week before that, yeah.
Oh. Well, we do it after the election? That third thing?
We could, I don't.
Or not?
Do it anytime you want to do it.
We don't have, the council doesn't have a meeting on that.
We don't have a meeting until the week after, right?
But they, yeah, and that was because they didn't want to meet on the.
Election day?
Yes.
Yeah, no.
It's gonna be on the 13th is your next, is your council meeting.
Oh, that's, we have like a big gap there? Do we do the 8th?
This is for the ordinance or the public hearing?
The public hearing, just, just so we kind of get past some, I'm gonna get the ordinance done earlier. That's good, is it okay? I know we have plenty of time, but just because we have a couple of meetings coming up, we got the 11th, we got our council meeting, we want to do the ordinance meeting, so we have the week of 30th, there's some stuff we're doing, so.
November 8th, you said?
Yeah. Is that pretty good for everybody, so that should give plenty of notice to people, kind of get through. All right, all right, so let's, let's go with that date, Jack, if we can, unless there's a problem.
Justina Joann, can you come to the October 11th meeting?
Oh, she can come?
Yep.
Oh, good, okay, great, great. Peter, you're the only odd man out, but, all right, is that right? I'm used to that. Fill you in. So good, all right, so, all right, so that settles that, and then all we, so all we need to do is that ordinance committee.
I'll get you a date, I'll get you a date out for that.
For, for us, so that'll be good, so.
Do you email us all these meetings?
I'll email you those.
Yes, we all keep them straight. Okay, so that's all the meetings, I guess, right? We got plenty of meetings, plenty of meetings going on. All right, so that's it, so we've had, no.
Right now, Mayor, can you hand us your key to?
Yes.
I mean, sure that we.
Yes.
So the joint meeting will be October 11th?
Yes, assuming Board of Finance is good, I mean, I.
I believe that they are.
Oh, good, okay.
Right, but we can confirm it, and we'll send out.
And Board of Ed, too, I mean, I would love the Board of Ed to be there, but I don't know.
Yeah, and Jeff will look at that.
Okay.
All right, and then your next council meeting will be October 16th.
Yeah.
And then you're gonna set up a ordinance committee meeting.
Right.
And then the public forum will be November 8th.
Right, and then, right, okay. Remember 8th? I don't know, what time you want to do it?
We, we normally do it at 7:00.
Yeah. All right, 7:00, good?
That'll be here.
That'll be at the high.
Try to get the high school.
At the high school.
And again, once we get the confirmation that we can use at different places, we'll send out an email, so it's, it's a clean email for you. By service.
Thanks, yeah, that's good.
Five of them.
Great. That would be helpful, that's good, thanks. Okay, great, so we're done with all that, all right, so, well, any special committee reports? I don't think anybody's, all right, council communications, what do you guys got?
I got, I got an email from, I believe it was Ken Lavoy.
Yeah.
Over on Farmington, excuse me, Fairview Drive, Alcurby.
Yep.
What's up? What's up?
Okay. What's up, is, I think Karen actually got an email earlier in the year. We've been, we've been, when we, when we did the road over last year on Fairview Drive, we typically sent a, a letter out informing all of our residents we're gonna do a road over. It's a standard letter. In the letter, the town, in the mayor's science letter, it said that we're gonna do curbing. Well, they didn't have curbing before in most of the road. They all want, most of them want to have curbing now. So when they did the road over, they didn't put the curbing in. I've met with the resident over here several times. He is accurate. Most of what he said in the letter was accurate, and we've been trying to schedule it. The, the highway department is behind on several of their projects, trying to get the road projects and things done this year. And also with, with the staffing, whereas they're behind on what I call smaller projects, such as the curbing and the backing up the curbing. When I got the email today, gave it to Michael O'Hearn, I told him it was one of the things I was hoping to finish before he got here, but I gave it to Michael. He contacted Mr. LaVoy and talked about the schedule and things. So they, he understands we're gonna try to get to it this fall, but if we don't, we'll do it first thing in the spring. It's just a matter of priority when we get, we get to it. But primarily, most of the stuff he said in the email was accurate.
Is it spring or now?
Right now, we're trying to do it fall. We are, I, I want to do it this fall. We have about, about six to seven weeks left of paving season. And it's a matter of can we fit that in with everything else we're trying to do. This, this, this summer, because of a couple of people being out and things, they are, they're behind on the work that they usually do on curbing and backing up the curbs.
And we, we tell that gentleman that?
We've already done, Michael called, Michael, since I got the email today, and I was gonna send an email to you, Michael called him probably within an hour after giving him the email and talking.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So you gave us some information here, Jack. I didn't know if you needed to mention any of this.
Oh, we got the, the concert.
We have the Navy Ban Northeast this Thursday night at 6:30 in McGee.
Right.
Right? It used to be outside, but you will get more.
Navy Ban, yeah.
They've come the last two years. They're pretty good.
There it is.
And was there, oh, I think last meeting, I gave you the, the magazine from Yankee Institute?
Yes. We have the, the fee waivers and the solid waste.
Yeah. So this is just information that, you know, that you, I felt that you should get.
Okay. And, and one final thing to share with the council that, I know we're looking at it, but the, and I, I forget the organization, but it's the Regional Homeless Shelter Network. You know, remember that letter?
Yeah.
That we got, that they're short on funding.
Yes, they have sent a request in for, for some shelters. Doug True has been working with them. He says it's something that we've, he's received before. We haven't made a commitment.
No.
Or not to at this point. Doug was gonna continue to monitor. If we, if we felt that we need to, Doug was gonna make a recommendation for, you know, for us at probably the next town, town council meeting.
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, obviously, for the winter months, apparently, they don't, with the homeless shelters, in the summer months, there is a, you know, a waiting period, I guess, sometimes unfortunately, because there's not enough of beds. But in the winter, we don't, we obviously don't want anyone to wait. So hence the, the funding is not there for the extra beds and the different. And I think we're in, with like Bristol and Brit, we're in a, like a region.
Hinton.
I forget the name of it.
Yeah.
Whatever the region is. So, all right, yeah, I appreciate that. So if you could just get back to the council, because, you know, if we can kick in something with our fellow towns to, to make sure no one, you know, is outside this winter, that would be good.
But we normally monitor that.
Yeah, I know, you monitor anyway. But if, you know, it seemed like they were, right, the letter seemed to say they were extra short this year of some funding, apparently. But I know Doug was gonna look into it.
Doug was looking into it, and, and he will make a recommendation.
Okay.
But again, we, we monitor that. We get, I get, obviously, you can see, I get notice, a lot of notices on the phone for emergency situations. Low temperature, we get to the winter season when it's very low temperature, exceptional snowfall, things like that, we get warnings. And there is, there's a, Matt Adish, who is our emergency response coordinator, and I'm constantly on the phone with Matt discussing. And in fact, that's the reason for the phone calls tonight, is make sure people are safe and they have places to go. Right now, there's several roads that are closed. Don't plan on going Farmington Avenue right now, or, or by Willowbrook, excuse me. Where else do they say? Christian Lane by Willowbrook is also closed. But the reason, we, we're both on these emergency response emails, and we're, I believe in talking weekends and things to make sure that people have housing and shelter. Last year, at one point, we contemplated opening Pistol Creek to take people to, to there to make sure that they have a warm place to stay. Normally, what there is, is it's only a few people, and we have arrangements with some of the local hotels, and we pay a low fee to make sure that people are housed. But we have a process in place here to make sure that people are taken care of.
Great. Okay, so that, so, so we have acceptance of minutes.
Okay, make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from Tuesday, September 18th, 2018.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. And now we will make a motion to go into executive session, which will be the last part of our meeting.
Okay, make a motion to go into executive session for real estate Connecticut State Statute, Section 1-200, 6 Part P, Discussion of Selection of a Site Sale or Purchase of Real Estate by the Town, Beckley Road.
And who are we inviting in?
It'll be Chris Edge.
Chris Edge.
Attorney to Naprow.
Naprow.
I saw.
That's it.
That it? Okay. So, folks, we have an executive session, which will have to depart the room. And after that, we will adjourn our meeting. So there's really nothing, no other business.